Good evening. Welcome to the December 13, 2012 Finance Audit and Budget and Capital Improvement Program Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taking of the meeting. Mrs. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Present. Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Here.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Present.
Ms. Higgins? Ms. Waller? Ms. Ahmed? Ms. Boston?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here. Thank you. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to adopt the December 13, 2012 Finance Audit and Budget and Capital Improvement Program meeting agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barrows. Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. It's been properly moved in second that we adopt the agenda for this evening. Mrs. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps? Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Colleagues, we do not have minutes that need to be approved this evening, and we don't have any public comment. There are no actions starting to be taken this evening. At this time, I yield to Dr. Crowley and staff for overview of item 2.1. Dr. Crowley?
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Sir Tom, Chair and Chief Financial Officer will provide an overview of items 2.01 to 2.03.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Crowley, Staff and guests. This will be a brief update over a couple of items here, particularly related to audits. The Maryland Department of Legislative Services Office of Legislative Audits began in the district in September 2011, and for the last 15 months, a team of auditors have been auditing a wide range of district operational areas, including facilities planning and maintenance, food services, grants, information technology, payroll, human resources, purchasing, dispersments, transportation, inventory, revenue and billing, our internal controls, and administrative planning. So it's a pretty wide-ranging, broad audit scope. For the most part, the audit team left in late October 2012, but as late as this week, my office received another request for some information. Now that the audit has in effect been, that the field work has been complete, the next step in the process is that the district can expect to receive a draft report of discussion notes or findings, which will be shared with Dr. Crowley and his team for review and feedback. This will involve sort of a review of the data. Our response will be to concur, to clarify, make other kinds of edits, explanatory comments, and so forth, to make sure that the auditors in fact have an accurate picture. Once this exercise is complete, that information will be sent back to the audit team, enabled then take that information and complete their report. The draft effort of those findings I've just mentioned a second ago are probably going to come. There isn't an exact schedule. We anticipate that sometime in January, that part of the exercise or the audit will begin. And then, given the time and energy that staff will spend doing the clarifying and the corrections and the editing, once that goes back to the audit team, the school system can probably expect to get a final report sometime in February, maybe even March. So that's the update on that legislative audit. Any questions? Just go forward. The next item is an update on the MSD enrollment audit. November 2nd this year, a host of district officials met with staff from the Maryland State Department of Education Audit Office to go over the general scope of the audit of state aid to education programs. The student data under review is mostly from the 2009 and 2010 academic years, though there is some data that's being requested that's tied to funding received in the 2011 academic year. The audit is designed to encompass sort of a review of a program, financial activities, and compliance with federal and state laws. Also, they'll be looking at internal controls, guidelines regarding program administration, and of course, enrollment reporting, which will be the key piece. The reason why that enrollment is the key is because it drives the revenue to the district. I have subsequently spoken with the MSD audit staff about the scope of the audit, and the focus will be on the major state aid programs, including the foundation program, transportation funding, compensatory education, primarily the free and reduced-priced meals, limited English proficient funding, special education funding, and any fiscal stabilization funds the district received. The actual field work dates are scheduled later on. They haven't been established just yet, but questionnaires have been received to our internal controls, as well as our internal controls related to our computers, and that information, those questionnaires, are to be completed and returned to MSD by May of this year. Testing of the student enrollment documents is a key part of the audit, and if errors are discovered, depending on the threshold or the standards that the audit team establishes, there could be extrapolations across the whole database, and then that would translate into a loss of revenue. And that's where we are at this point. That concludes my update on 2.01. Next quick update is on W-2 and 1099 tax form processing. Real briefly, the payroll and benefits staff are working on preparing the W-2s for the district employees, generating approximately 20,000 documents. Staff's currently doing testing, making sure the print file works, making sure there's no problems, particularly since we just had an R-12 upgrade of the Oracle application. And that, of course, the tax forms are due to employees by January 31st. Staff's targeting 25th or so to get that done. And also, not only will the paper versions be available to staff, the Oracle self-system electronic access will be updated as well, so staff could get to it that way as well. Similar process is underway relative to accounts payable, where contractors are being issued 1099s. They're also scheduled for release by law, by regulation, by January 31st. We're planning to get those out as well by the 25th of January. The volume of 1099 forms is, of course, much less than the thousands of W-2s, approximately 750 to 800 forms. And of course, the same R-12 validation testing is being done to make sure that the print-file merge process works. That's the update on 1099s and W-2s. Lastly, the agenda item 2.03, the Service Consolidation and Cost Reduction Task Force. In the midst of the fiscal stress that was being suffered by both the county and the state, there was a 17-member task force that was established on June 14th, 2011, to examine the ways that the county and the school system could consolidate services to provide cost savings. Subsequently, the scope of that original task force charge was narrowed to really examine how procurement of goods and services might be consolidated. And as was noted in your report, there were a series of meetings held by the task force in December, February, June, July, and this past September. The primary results of the task force is that both the county and the Board of Ed has agreed to engage in cooperative purchasing, either through using council of government contracts or through contract riders, which would basically help the school system and the county enjoy benefits associated with economy of scale through volume and bulk purchasing. Some of the benefits that the task force produced were that there would be increased efficiency, there would be a leveraging of resources, both in terms of developing bid specs. If you do a better job on your bid specs, you could also be doing a better job as you're budgeting. Also, making sure that there was increased local support for vendors. In FY12 last year, proudly, I think, the Board of Education had a 33% local participation when it came to awarding contracts. And other benefits include service collaboration, increasing communication between ourselves and our colleagues in the county, and better planning as well. In terms of savings estimate, the task force, as noted in the report, they focused pretty much on paper, on toner, on electrical supplies, ice melt, and plumbing supplies. For those categories of goods, the cost is approximately 3.6 million annually, and the effort to consolidate and to cooperate in the purchasing is likely to yield a savings of around 15%, which would be about 500, just a bit over $500,000. That concludes my report on the task force.
And before we go to the next item, I have questions from board members, and recognize Mr. Barrows.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Sure.
I know you're new to the system, and so thank you for all that you've done and all that you plan to do. I didn't want copies of the task force report, just so that, you know, I'm able to better understand exactly the details of the report. And then also, I just asked when the audits become available publicly, that we post them on our website, and that we post them on our website and that we get copies of it.
Surely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Fellows?
Again, thank you. Thank you for updating the report, and I'm just asking this as one of the newer school board members regarding this report, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I haven't had a chance to review it and detailed analysis of it. However, my superficial analysis of this report says that FY 2012 ended this year with a budget surplus of 91.33 million. Is this correct? And if it is correct, where did it come from?
You're speaking to the audit for FY12?
Yes.
I believe...
Fiscal year ending June 30th of 2012. I'm sorry. Okay. Yes.
Without having looked at it recently, I believe you're correct. The variance is a function of excess revenue over obligations?
Further, my superficial analysis of this report says we had a total cost of service for FY 2012 was at 1.985 billion dollars. The net cost for service for FY 2012 was 1.552 billion for FY 2012. Can someone please explain in simple English the difference between the 400 million in the total cost of services and the net cost of services?
I'd have to take a look at that report to give you a specific answer, and I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. I'm almost done. Further, this report talks about a $20 million transfer of funds to the Food and Nutrition Service by management. What does that mean in a layman language?
What that means, ma'am, is that over probably the last five, six, seven years, the self-sufficiency of the food and nutrition operation has been running in deficit. And it had gotten to the point where our external auditors had noted it to be a problem, and we had to address it. I think that was in the 2011 audit, or maybe 2010. And so the previous administration had been put to get a plan to address it. And so we had about, I think we had about a $20 million deficit that was then resolved in FY 12 through the variance between revenues that we received and expenditures that were obligated.
Okay. Also, $48 million is projected as revenue if the sequestration occurs. Where did the $48 million come from?
When you mentioned earlier about the total fund balance reserves of about 90 million or $91 million, what that is, is that at the end of the fiscal year, there were a whole series of financial obligations of the district. So we were very fortunate in FY 12 compared to FY 11, because in FY 11, the fund balance reserves in total for the school system was about $3 million, which is, it's really dangerous. That's a level of excess that can't really be justified from a financial management perspective. So because of the change in variance, the variance between revenues and expenditures of the $90 million, a series of reserves were set up to accommodate those financial obligations that are out there, one of them being OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is really our healthcare obligation, which is in the billions. There were other obligations that were out there, such as in trying to anticipate the sequestration, also set aside some funds for compensation, and I don't have the, I can't remember the other, but there are a few other areas that were targeted that I think one of the blocks of resources was also accounting a reserve for our inventory in the warehouse. So the audit reflects the use of those excess resources, which leaves, I think, an unreserved, undesignated, unassigned fund balance of about $17 million. The others are reserved for those specific purposes that are listed on that page.
Okay. And lastly, is there possible to get a detailed mid-year listing of actual expenses, which I believe will be ready on January 15th? My experience is working in the council leads me to believe that mid-year actuals are the cornerstone of budget planning and the establishment of budget marks.
Well, that might be true for a government, but for a school system, it's a little bit different. You know, many instances, when we're doing our financial review, which we try to target at September, it's very hard to get a sense of where we're going financially, because teachers don't start on July 1. So you have, you know, a couple of months of payroll that aren't really into the, aren't booked, because they're not there. So for the, which is very different than the county government or a city, because those employee contracts, for the most part, are 26 times a year. They start in July, and it's pretty much like clockwork. School system's a little bit different in that regard. As far as the financial projections and financial reporting, the plan is that Superintendent will be bringing a financial review as of December 30 to the board. In terms of sequence of events, the books, once we month-end close as of December 31, it'll take staff and the accounting department probably about 20 days to reconcile the accounts so that we can then have information that's valid, so we can actually then do a projection going forward. So that would take us into probably the second meeting in February for board presentation, which would be effective as of December 30.
So in essence, that is a mid-year review that process that you were just talking about, that you just were referring to, that is somewhat of a mid-year review, so we can assure that we're not under...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right. The administration brings financial reviews to the board periodically, making sure, one of the primary responsibilities of Dr. Crowley is to make sure that the school system is in a rock-solid financial position, and one of his obligations is to notify the board if there's some problem, which takes place through the periodic financial reporting.
Okay. Periodically meaning...
At least quarterly. Sometimes there's a variation on that, depending on circumstance.
Okay. Thank you.
Surely.
Yield back to you.
Thank you. At this time, it is my pleasure to provide the board with a proposed fiscal year 2014 operating budget and impact on student-based budgeting. The Prince George's County Public Schools fiscal 2014 budget will focus on resources, on the maintenance of our core services and programs that directly impact teaching and learning. The budget will also support our primary goals of ensuring that our students have the tools for academic success, there are effective teachers in every classroom, and that our students are college and career-ready upon graduation. At this time, I'd like to introduce a short video.
Yelling the name of their school and dancing in the aisles, the Whitehall Elementary students' celebration of their school winning the country's top educational prize, a national blue ribbon, was yet one more signature event in a growing list of successes in the Prince George's County Public Schools.
Boys and girls, are you excited about this school?
Yeah!
I'd like to thank all the people in this room for furthering our system-wide goal of making sure that our young people are equipped with the resources, the skills, the knowledge, and behaviors that they need to compete in a global training field.
From advanced test scores and increasing numbers of students taking advanced placement courses, to ever-nuer digital learning tools, to new academies like one for firefighting at Flowers High School, to strong partnerships with businesses like Target, who just completed a makeover of the entire library at Thomas Stone Elementary, the school system is firmly moving in the right direction, and everyone involved, from parents to students to staff, are taking notice.
But when I saw these 20 young people walk in with those uniforms and their heads up high, it just really showed me that they are, they have the right stuff. They exemplify what we want to do in regards to creating partnerships that allow kids to have relevant learning experiences as early as high school.
So I think the word is out, that the school system seems to be improving virtually every indicator, is moving in the right direction. We find the appropriate partners, and we allow schools to go where their heart tells them, and I think that's really the key to the successes that we've had in Prince George's County.
One of the things that I can look forward to in Prince George's County is the commitment that the teachers and the staff have at Kennelworth Elementary to my son. Since he's gotten there, he's done nothing but excel, and we've been very proud. I love the AP program that we have here, and I love all the different programs like IB and the foundations of tech courses that we have, whether it's being an electrical engineer, whether it's being an actor like myself, whether it's being a chef, whether it's being a teacher, you can do anything here if you put your mind to it.
With the new interim superintendent constantly visiting with students and administrators and asking what they'd like to see to make Prince George's schools better still, the well-considered suggestions he's getting and success stories he's hearing can only help maintain the school system's momentum.
Well, one thing I think our school could improve on is, we do have an SAT prep class, but it's only available really for higher grades. I think if we started in ninth grade with SAT prep, it would kill two birds with one stone, because we would also be preparing students for the HSA.
But my number-one thing is to improve customer service, so that is one of our goals here, and that's building the capacity of our staff, customer service, professional developments, and modeling.
And while other recommendations range from more technology in their classrooms, to bigger auditoriums, to additional guidance counselors, and vegan choices in the cafeteria, any shortcomings did not diminish students' pride in their schools or their acknowledgement that supportive teachers, parents, and friends, and a strong self-discipline are non-negotiables when it comes to success.
Either their academic clubs, their social clubs, debate teams, there's something for everyone, and I think that's really amazing that they allow us to be so creative.
They don't baby you here, you know? You know, like if you don't do a homework assignment, you don't just get to turn in the next day, you have to do things for it. So they try to prepare you for the real world, you know, for college.
And also, when you have dedicated family and friends who are on top of you, be like, "You're good, I want to see you successful," and they're with you to help you become successful.
Even in the earliest of grades, as Dr. Crowley discovered, finding the right path to success in college and career is much on students' minds.
After I graduate from high school, I'm gonna be at home thinking about what college I should go to and which is like best for me, and what will help me throughout life and perhaps get a good degree.
As we think about our overall vision and mission as an organization, and that's to have our students college and career-ready, it's just exciting to have our young people focused around the importance of going to college, and to think about careers, and to think about the path that they're taking, and how we can support them in their work.
Giving students every opportunity to savor their school days and to pursue their dreams couldn't be more important, because the time spent in Prince George's schools can be among the defining moments of one's life. Just ask a Parkdale High School graduate who just happens to wear an Olympic gold medal.
And what did Prince George's Schools mean to you in your life?
It meant life, you know? I had a chance and opportunity to better myself as a student, as a person, and I went to PG County School Systems, and it's made me the person I am today, to be humble, but to work hard, to appreciate what's been given to me, and to give back.
So this evening, as we present the fiscal year 2014 budget, we'd like to take you on a journey, starting with our strategic plans, to talk about some of our academic accomplishments, to give you a sense of the budget feedback that we received as a part of the process, our fiscal picture as we look forward, some of our enrollment trends, district priorities, to talk about student-based budgeting, which is the centerpiece of what happens in our schools, and giving schools and principals the flexibility to make good decisions on behalf of our students, and then a sense of our budget timeline. Certainly, as a school division, we are guided by our strategic plan goals, and we have five goals that focus us around high student achievement and making sure that there is consistent, rising achievement of all of our students. We know that teaching is the centerpiece of what happens in classrooms as a part of our core values. We talk about victory, that victory is in the classroom, and that starts with recruiting and retaining good teachers, making sure that our students are in safe and supportive learning environments, building strong relationships with our community partners, and then holding ourselves accountable as good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, and having efficient and effective operations. I'd like to highlight some of our academic achievements. As we look at our eight-year trend data, beginning with 2005, 2012, we see consistent, steady progress of our students in reading and mathematics. We see an increase in second graders who score on and above on the SRI, improvements in ACT, and stable performance on the SAT with increased participation rates. And we know that these are critical assessments that lead to college choices. And as we look at the national findings and our performance, we know that our students are on the right track. We've seen an increase in the Hispanic student participation and performance on the National Advanced Placement and SAT exam. We're very pleased to tout that Prince George's County has the first middle college program, and we're doing that in collaboration with our partner at Prince George's Community College. And as you saw in the video, Whitehall Elementary School was named a National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, one of six schools in the state of Maryland. Some additional accomplishments, we're seeing improvements in our math performance, we have a partnership with Capital One Bank, where we've established the first, on the East Coast, student-run bank at Parksdale High School. We're seeing increases in the percentage of graduates passing our HSA, and then finally, again, increased advanced placement enrollment and performance. And then finally, again, increased advanced placement enrollment and performance. So we started this journey with working with our community to get feedback from them on the budget process. And this year, we decided to take a somewhat different approach. Rather than have our community partners talk for about three minutes into the microphone, we decided to have some roundtable conversations with them about the budget process. And so we came together in four different sites across the district, and we asked our community partners three questions. One, what are the things that you would like to see in the next fiscal year's budget? What are the things that we should think about taking out or doing our business in a different way? And then what are some suggestions to increase engagement in the overall budget process? We extended that conversation and process as I went out to visit schools this year and had an opportunity to talk with teachers and students and principals. And so I added these three questions to my school visits and conversations with students and received some very interesting feedback about the budget. One of the questions that I asked our students was, "Do you have any idea how much the operating budget is to run Prince George's County Public Schools?" And I can tell you, there was a range from about $150 to about $12 billion. And so therein is an opportunity to engage in students about our budget. And so I told them about our operating budget. And so again, opportunities to hear from our young people, opportunities to educate. And so we extended some of our discussions with our labor partners, PTA County Council President, and then most recently, had an opportunity to host a session with our delegates and other elected officials to talk about our accomplishments, to talk about our challenges as a school district, and to talk about the fiscal year 2014 budget. There are also opportunities for our citizens to engage online to give us feedback as well. Some of the themes that emerged from the conversations with our parents, our teachers, principals, and students, some of the themes were around capacity in our schools, boundary and the need to right-size a number of our schools, given some of the crowding that we're seeing in certain schools across the district. And as most of you know, we are engaged in a boundary process where we just concluded getting a level of feedback from our community citizens, and we will continue to solicit feedback and respond to their questions. Certainly a focus around employee compensation and staff retention, recognizing the importance of continuing to look for recruit and hire, maintain qualified, highly effective staff. There were discussions around parent engagement and how we could increase the engagement of our parents, not only in the budget process, but then the overall operations of our school system. Technology emerged as a topic of conversation in making sure that as we prepare students for the 21st century, that they have the technological skills to compete in a global society. Transportation and looking at our transportation cost as well as our operations to be as efficient and as effective as possible. There were a number of parents and students who talked about the need to have a visual performing arts program at Northwestern High School. And then finally, we had some discussions about student-based budgeting as we are implementing our first full year of SVB. What should it look like next year? What are the things that we've learned along the way that we can incorporate in the fiscal year 2014 budget? As we think about next year and some of our challenges, certainly we've looked at our enrollment, and we continue to see a decline in our overall enrollment while, as we disaggregate, we see increases in our free and reduced meal services or students that are eligible for those services, as well as our English language learners. And I'll show you a visual display of that information in a minute. Recession in terms of property assessments are down 15%, and we anticipate a further decline for 2014. And then, most of you have heard some of the challenges at the state level around a structural deficit that is projected to be at least a billion dollars. Also in the news almost every day are discussions about the fiscal cliff and sequestration. And this is something that we continue to have conversations about almost daily, monitoring the possible effects, and then, more importantly, beginning to plan for any reductions that might happen at the federal level that will impact the school district, such as our funds that we get through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or that's commonly referred to as IDEA, as well as our Title I funds and some other funds that come to us through our federal stream. As we look at our fiscal picture of revenue, you can see the 2013 approved revenue of about 1.64 or 1.66 in terms of the operating budget. The proposed revenue is around 1,679 with a variance of about $14,772 as a surplus. Again, as we look at enrollment trends, beginning at 2011 and then projecting out to fiscal year 2014, you can see the overall enrollment. And then as we look at our students, you see that there's again a variance in the decrease in enrollment. And also, as we look at other enrollment, you'll see those numbers. For example, in special education, at the bottom of the box, you'll see that there's actually been a decrease in the number of students found eligible for special education services. We've also displayed this so that you can see the students in which we receive funding for the state and then students in which we do not receive funding. For example, our pre-K students are not funded through the state. That is a locally operated cost to the district. Again, an analysis of enrollment and our decrease so you can see where we fall. So one of the things that we did as a part of looking at our fiscal year 14 forecast was to go back and look at this issue of compensation and to get a sense of where we are in comparison to our neighboring jurisdictions. And here's a slice using the Washington Area Boards of Education report that has some Virginia districts as well as some of our Maryland districts. And you can see that in terms of the per pupil cost, we're about sixth in this display of about 10 school districts. Looking further at the average salary of our teachers as well as salary and benefits, again, using the same, pretty much the same group of school districts, you will see that we're about sixth. And we looked at this for a variety of reasons, to get some cost comparisons, as well as to get a sense of our competition, quite frankly, and what other districts are offering. So where were we? So several years ago, certainly we were focused on budget reductions. Staffing ratios were pretty much even across schools. We were treating all of our schools the same. We had limited information about how each school is funded and staffed. And then a lot of our practices were more compliance-driven. Where we are now and where we are moving towards in terms of strengthening our provision of services, beginning to look at some of our structural issues, allowing us to adequately invest in student needs and build fiscal stability, as Mr. Sheeran referenced, looking at funding the needs of our students and giving our principals and assistant principals the flexibility to design programs and to implement their provision of services based on the needs of the students in their schools. Being very transparent in our budget process so that we have a sense of how the district funds its schools, and then drilling down to the specific budgets within schools and how decisions have been made in terms of expenditure of funds. And then finally, looking very closely at our central office and how our central office supports our schools in the day-to-day operations. And our goal is to be more customer service-friendly, to be responsive and timely in our actions to support the needs of our schools. And this is a display that we've used throughout the budget process as we've engaged in conversations with our community partners, where we've talked about the need to fund our student needs, to look at the needs of our students, and then direct funds based on programmatic needs, individual needs, so that we're truly implementing student-based budgeting. Preparing our students as a centerpiece to be college and workforce-ready. And we know that means being innovative in our practices and utilizing a variety of community partners, such as Prince George's Community College, such as Bowie, University of Maryland, implementing our secondary school reform initiatives, and then making sure that we have highly effective staff in front of our students, supporting our students, taking care of our buildings each and every day, and then finally, being fiscally stable as a school division. So as we think about the work, as we think about our district, we've identified our district priorities that will drive our budget decisions. Making sure that we have responsible budgeting to ensure stable fund balance, investing in employee compensation, continuing to invest in innovative options, and I've listed a couple here, such as our college, a career readiness initiative around middle college, our charter schools, secondary school reform, and then also, looking at alternative education and the options that we're providing some of our young people and making sure that we're getting the outcomes in those programs as well. And then finally, strengthening and maintaining instruction by redirecting resources to support adequate funding for our schools. As we think about next year's budget, I'd like to just point out several initiatives across the next three slides. And so as we think about funding needs, we've put forward some recommendations around ways to support our instructional program that will focus on assessment materials and office support, making sure that our juniors can take the SAT, supporting special education. We're seeing some challenges in terms of contractual services and some of our hard-to-fuel areas. For example, hiring speech and language pathologists is a challenge nationwide, and so we use contractual services. In terms of transportation, setting aside funds for replacement of buses, which is something that we have to look at each and every year, responding to enrollment changes in our charter schools as some of them continue to grow. Food services, Mr. Sheeran talked about the subsidy and making sure that we're planning for this subsidy, recognizing that currently our food services program is not self-sufficient. Our goal is to make it self-sufficient down the road, and I think we'll have to do that in a number of ways. Expanding our IT at Fairmont Heights, planning for the 11th graders as a part of the overall plan of increasing access to instructional technology for those students. I do want to point out that one of the decisions that we've made is the elimination of the ROTC programs at Crossland and Douglas. And this is driven by enrollment, and we've looked at at least three years of trend data, and we've seen an increasing, a decrease in the number of students participating in those programs. Expanding the middle college initiative to the third year. I think now we have about 198 students, and the goal is to add 100 students, and this would pay for the cost of tuition as well as transportation. Increasing funding for our student-based budgeting, and there's 2.6 million allocated there, and we'll continue to look at that allocation and the disbursement, and certainly that will be made based on schools, enrollment, and other factors that go into the actual allocations to schools. A small amount of money to support destination imagination registration. We're in the process of replacement of computers. We've looked at middle and high schools, and now we're focusing on elementary schools, and we're estimating about 3.1 million to look at replacement costs for elementaries as well as our regional centers. And then allocating 1.8 million dollars for purchase of textbooks that will cost somewhere around $8 million, but the annual lease purchase price is about 1.8 million. Supporting our employees, looking at the rising cost of health benefits, and this number represents about a 10% increase that we anticipate will happen as a result of health benefits. Looking at the supports that we provide in our schools for security, and so there are at least two middle schools where we need to add some additional security support based on the number of students in the building and some other factors. Mr. Anthony talked with us a bit about HR and the work that HR is doing to build capacity, to be more responsive, to make sure that we continue to recruit and retain applicants. And then some additional work that will need to be done as we look forward around teacher evaluation, and the state is giving us good guidance on the revised teacher evaluation system. And we also know that we have a principal evaluation system, and we want to make sure that we're not only looking at those two systems that are in play, but looking at our evaluation system for all of our employees and making sure that we have the capacity to effectively evaluate our employees. And again, some funds set aside for recruitment and retention, life insurance, and then setting aside a pot of money for negotiations. And the actual expenditure around negotiations will certainly be a decision that this board will make in collaboration with our unions. There are some other continuing obligations that we need to look at as a school district around grievance settlements, and this one particularly connects to temporary employees and setting funds aside to address grievance settlements. And again, this is not the total allocation, but moving us in that direction, as well as some things that we've negotiated around stipends, teacher pension increases, and then looking at workman compensation issues and some of our challenges, and anticipating what we will need in order to address worker compensation issues. And then the final slide in terms of expenditures, looking at college and career readiness and innovation, our alternative programs. We've had a committee working, representatives from our alternative programs, and talking, quite frankly, about some of our academic outcomes, some of our challenges, and ways in which we can strengthen the experience for students who are going through our alternative programs. And some of the areas that we identified were the need to, one, have some kind of structured college readiness experience for our young people where they actually had discussions in a formal way about what it takes to prepare for college, what it takes to produce a reference, different careers, to be informed about the application process, and other work that is required to gain admission to a college. And so we know that one of the structured programs nationally is College Summit. We have a number of our schools currently participating in College Summit, and our goal is to bring College Summit to our alternative education programs, as well as to increase the level of professional development of staff, working with students in the alternative programs, to add a behavioral component, to get some additional expertise, to address some of the challenges that may have led students to being eligible to participate in the alternative programs so that, again, we're focusing in on the needs of students, strengthening their skills, addressing behaviors that may be a barrier to their learning and to their success. And then finally, infusing an IT initiative into our alternative programs, given what we're seeing at schools like Fairmont High School and the IT program there and the young people who are preparing to have certification skills at a high school level. And these are the kinds of experiences that we think would bolster or strengthen our alternative programs. Also, as we look at second shift preventive maintenance efforts... Also, as we look at second shift preventive maintenance efforts and overtime in general, we think by adding the second shift to the existing work that we're doing, we can reduce overtime costs, and more importantly, we can get staff in buildings doing the work, the preventive work that needs to happen to make sure that our buildings are running in an efficient manner. Student Services, this particular line item would focus on having a data analysis person, doing some additional programming around our counseling program, as well as some other initiatives within student services. And then a series of activities from supporting services that would have a budget implication such as our energy management system, responding to our house bill that requires us to become more green in the use of some of our cleaning products and what it will take to make that transition. And then there are a number of certification requirements under IT that we will need to maintain for our IT systems, and some of these items that were funded previously through grants that are no longer available, but we need to continue in order to provide supports to our various offices such as HR and our Oracle system and to our schools. One particular initiative for Sutland High School as part of their pre-engineering program, and that's to expand Project Lead the Way. I've talked about secondary school reform and making sure that we are on track for reaching our goal of having at least one academy in each high school and providing some additional support as part of secondary school reform. And then finally, the recommendation for a visual and performing arts center in Northwestern High School that would complement our existing program that we have at Sutland High School. Under fiscal stability, again, Mr. Sharon talked about the comprehensive annual financial report and continuing to use that information to guide our accountability around expenditure of resources, focusing on program evaluation to assess effective and efficient use of our resources. And this is a very important one to us because as we think about budgets and as we think about making those tough decisions, we want to make sure that our budget is aligned with student outcomes and that we are maximizing our funding for the various programs and services. And so part of this effort is to dig a little bit deeper and to critically look at some of the programs that we're operating to make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we desire as a school district. And this is also an investment of time. And then finally, increasing our fund balance reserves and make sure that we're healthy as an organization and that we're implementing good customer service. And so part of our customer service initiative is to look at how we're aligned as a school division to do outreach to our schools and to do the outreach to our communities so that our community views us as responsive, our community views us as welcoming, our community views us as helpful in helping them navigate the school system and supporting their young people. And so part of that effort is to make sure that we have a customer service initiative that's aligned with the district's work, we're doing the training that we need to do, we're building capacity to support our schools, and we're changing the role of central office on a day-to-day basis to interface more with our schools around specific challenges that impact the teaching and learning process and the overall operations of our school buildings. And so as we think about our guiding principles and student-based budgeting, we want to make sure that we continue to be student-focused, that we're equitable in our distribution of resources, that we're transparent in our actions, and that we have flexibility and that we know that things change, that things happen, and we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to respond to them and that we're holding ourselves accountable for results, and that the work that we do on a day-to-day basis, that that work is aligned with our strategic plan, and we make adjustments as appropriate. And so as we think about our school district, as we look at this pie and the distribution, we see that in terms of school operating resources, about 71% of our funding goes directly to school operating resources. We can look at student services and the 2%. Academic programs, which are additional supports that go right into schools, such as our instructional directors, our instructional or curriculum supervisors, and other people that support our schools on a day-to-day basis, our security services that keep our schools safe, our transportation services designed to get students to school in a safe manner, in a timely manner. And then finally, the support from non-base, school-based central offices, which is about 12%. And this is our funding allocation under the operating budget. So moving forward in our budget timeline, today, December 13th, we present to you an overview of the budget, and then we will go forward with a number of work sessions beginning in January, January 29th, public hearings here at the Sasser Building, and they will continue through February, where we'll have work sessions and a series of public hearings, and then leading up to the June reconciliation and adoption of the fiscal year 2014 approved budget. So in conclusion, as we think about this operating budget for fiscal year 2014, we are focused on compensation and benefits of our staff, maintaining our commitment to student-based budgeting, maintaining our commitment and expanding our commitment to our secondary school reform initiatives, being innovative in our practices that meet the needs of our students, and then finally, our fiscal stability in our operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley, for that extensive, for the video and then the presentation. A quick, a couple of quick questions just for my colleagues and I. When would the budget, when is the budget book going to be available?
The budget book will be available next week, and we look forward to presenting it to the board for your holiday season reading.
Guarantee you, we will be doing that. I also wanted to indicate on your timeline that you missed March. When I say March, I mean in terms of the actual submission to the county executive in that timeline, but-
Absolutely.
We'll make sure we get that in. All right, so at this time, colleagues, if there are any questions, we'll entertain them, but just to note that this was designed to be the presentation this evening and to have a process by which we will submit questions to the administration. So, Dr. Crowley, what the board typically does is we take the budget book and divide it in parts, and we assign ourselves various portions of the book so that we can all be responsible for submitting questions to the administration, just going over process. So we'll come up with, we'll have board staff come up with a list of dates based on that. And also with regard to process, we, the board likes to get questions that come from union representatives and responses, so, and then, and then all of that stuff sort of gets put online so that the public can see what questions were asked and what responses were given. We find that beneficial, so that what we would do is to assign the questions, we'll have a date by which the responses are due back, and we try to do that in a way that it's before the next meeting, if at all possible. And then if there are questions that can't be answered for some reason before then, then you would just indicate that. Another process, we often get, I'm not sure, I just didn't see it yet, but we also often will still have a link online for, for citizens to still, if they have questions, they could actually see them and they can submit them as well relative to each session that we have. Okay? Did I miss anything, colleagues in process? Okay. All right, that being the case, again, thank you very much, good presentation, and we look forward to the budget book, which is where I think we'll really be able to parse it all out. Wow. I yield back to you for CIP. Thank you. No, if, do you want to ask a question? Okay, you didn't buzz in. Go ahead, Ms. Fellows.
Just a few. Thank you, Dr. Crowley, for the wonderful presentation, and thank you for taking on this awesome task too as our interim superintendent. Just want to ask one question, the 2014 proposed budget, will it, are you going to also, or will it reflect any changes to the current organizational structure?
There will be some minor change to the organization's structure. Right now, we're having some discussion about community engagement and constituent services and parent engagement and how we bring all of those together to form a stronger link to our community around community engagement. So there might be some changes there. We don't anticipate any additional changes in the actual organizational structure, and we're, we have some slight changes in special ed and early childhood, but I don't think they're significant, and you want to, I don't know if you want to mention them.
We actually have presented a change in early childhood that we want to do now, and it's taking two coordinating, creating another coordinating supervisor, supervisor of early childhood, and then a supervisor of the Judy Hoyer Center, and we'll be able to accomplish that by using current vacancies. So that's, that's where we are right now. That's the only reorg that we're considering at the time.
Okay, so the constituent services has not, or has it been placed in the communications office?
We have started, we had some conversation. We've started some movement of consolidation around community engagement, but certainly we still have constituent services, and they still function to provide problem-solving and outreach to our citizens and to our schools.
Okay, and would this change require board approval?
Well, we've already had some discussion about it, and certainly as we move forward with adoption of the budget, I would think whatever organizational changes will be a part of that adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fellows. Dr. Crowley? Yield back to you.
I think the next item is an update on our facility condition assessment and summary of findings, and at this time, we'll have a representative give us an overview of the updated facility condition.
Good evening, Dr. Crowley, board members, vice chair and madam chair, and members and guests. This afternoon, we have, this evening, we have Parsons, which is our consultant that we hired several months ago to give us an updated assessment. Just to set the tone of where we are is that, for most of you all recall, in 2008, Parsons, which was then TRDI, did a detailed assessment of about 184 building facilities in the district and in 2008. Since 2008, we have been using that data to help us craft the capital budgets and do projects, et cetera, et cetera. In 2012, and in a couple of board meetings we had earlier, the board did give us the notification that, let's, they'd like to see an update of where we are. So since then, we have commissioned Parsons several months ago to give us now an updated assessment, which is called a desktop assessment. So what they have looked at, they have looked at the 2008 numbers, they have also looked at the capital budget approved from since 2008 till now, in terms of the dollars and cents, we have got approved for all our capitals, you know, for the schools, different schools, and they have since taken that information, dovetailed it into the whole system, whether it is a repair, whether it's an addition, whether it's a replacement school. So the database you will see now, the quick synopsis, is all inclusive of all of that data. And so it does, one of the pages, which was a recommendation from the board, was we'd like to see a correlation, a relationship between the old assessment, one, the most recent eight, and then the one now, 12. So we have done so to give you a correlation between each and every school that was assessed, how the numbers do stack up and how the numbers do match. And so this presentation this afternoon is, Parsons will kind of walk through you from the top to the bottom, where we are, and as a global snapshot, and if you have any questions at that point, then we'll entertain questions. So this is, Gloria would give you a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Crowley, staff, guests. My name is Gloria Keener. It is my pleasure to present these findings for you of an updated facility condition assessment recently conducted by Parsons. Now, before I begin, I would like just to take a minute and thank the capital program office, as well as the leadership and team members for the operations and maintenance group for their support in providing us all the information that was needed in order to conduct this task. Parsons has actually been working with Prince George's County Schools since 2001, when we did an initial assessment for you. Now, in 2008, we conducted an updated facility condition assessment for 184 of your facilities and schools. The purpose of this effort was to provide an update of that 2008 effort and thereby provide you with updated facility condition index, FCI scores, and thereby providing you with the current condition of those 184 schools, facilities. I'd like to point out that as I'm presenting my results here this evening, you'll hear me use that the total number is 186 and not 184. This is because we included all 184 buildings that we included in 2008, and in addition, we included two replacement schools, those for Greenbelt Middle School and Fairmont Heights High School. So for those two schools, we included both the original facilities as well as the replacement In 2008, we conducted a physical assessment of your buildings, meaning we walked each of the schools, conducting detailed visual inspections of each building. For this effort, we were asked to conduct a desktop review of available information to assess the current condition of the buildings and basically the changes that have been made to the building since 2008. So in order to do this, we reviewed numerous documents for those projects that have been approved since 2008, many of those of which have been completed, and of course, some of those are still in progress. So some of these documents that we review included CIP program and funding reports. We also looked at available construction documents, drawings, specifications, as well as we looked at any other scoping documents that were available with respect to these projects. Regarding operations and maintenance, we looked at the last five years' worth of work orders. We also, of course, utilized and worked with the program staff. Now, Parsons state-of-the-art software, eComment, was used to record and analyze the building information. This is a web-based application that creates a database, it has a user-friendly interface, and then allows that information to be sorted, filtered, and prioritized. So we took the information from the different documents that we reviewed for the various repair, renovation, and new construction projects, and we updated the eComment database to reflect the changes that have been made to those buildings since 2008. Now, I would like to point out that several of the projects that have been approved and are in progress were not included in this assessment. These include the major renovation projects at Glenard Woods Elementary School and Samuel Chase Elementary School, as well as the projects associated with the Special Education Inclusion Initiative. These projects are still in the very early programming and design phases, and thus, the detailed information needed for the assessment is not yet available. So what is the facility condition index, the FCI? The FCI is a key metric for determining basically the state of needed repairs for a building. It can be calculated by dividing the needed repair dollars by the current replacement value for a given building, and it basically represents what percentage of that building is broken, is missing, or has expired, it's beyond its useful life. Now, once the FCIs are calculated, we can take those numbers, and for a given building portfolio, you can use- portfolio, you can use those FCIs as a basis for making decisions on how to use your financial resources. So looking at this example, if you have a school that currently has needed repairs totaling $5 million, and the replacement value of that school is $10 million, its FCI score is 50%. Now, once the FCIs are calculated, we can also categorize them, which we've done. Those schools that have FCI scores greater than 75% are considered to be in poor condition. Schools with FCI scores that fall between 40 and 75% are considered to be in fair condition, and a school with a score less than 40% is considered to be in good condition. So the average FCI score for all 186 facilities is currently 49.52%, which is a little lower than the 53.94% that was calculated in 2008. This graph shows a relationship, basically shows the distribution with respect, or the FCI scores with respect to building age. And as you can see, it's basically showing that for these 186 facilities, most of them fall between 30 and 60 years old and are in fair condition. So if we compare the results from 2008 with the recent effort, this is what we find. The number of facilities in poor condition have decreased. They've gone down from nine to three, while the number of facilities in both fair and good condition have increased. You'll also see here that the current needed repairs basically have remained unchanged from 2008 to 2012. These numbers represent the amount of money that's needed to repair or replace the broken, the missing, the expired building systems. Now, the future needs, what we call capital renewal, those dollars were estimated to be $696 million in 2008, and they're currently estimated at $715 million. These numbers represent the amount of money that it will take to correct deficiencies that are anticipated over the next 10 years. This slide provides a summary of the recent capital funding that's been allocated. A total of $483 million has been approved and allocated for repair, renovation, and new construction projects since May of 2008. This table breaks down the needed repairs and the capital renewal dollars, the future need dollars, by the different types of facility categories. So you've got elementary school, middle schools, high schools. It also shows you the total replacement values for each of those categories, as well as the average FCI for each of those categories. And basically, if you look at all the data, all the numbers on this table, one thing that'll show is that elementary schools incorporate or make up a large percentage of this portfolio based on square footage, and also currently has the highest number of dollars in terms of current needs, followed by high schools. So the remaining of my presentation provides a listing of all 186 facilities and their FCIs in order of poor, fair, and good condition. There are currently three facilities that are in poor condition. Two of these are currently vacant. And those two facilities are the Kroom Vocational High Building, which actually, the building that formerly housed that program, and also the Thomas Addison Alternative School. Tulut Grove Elementary School is also in this category. Now, facilities in this category, in poor condition, typically have multiple large building systems that have failed or are in need of repair. So that means in these buildings, you're going to probably find problems with the HVAC systems, the plumbing, plumbing fixtures, electrical, electrical paneling, the electrical wiring, maybe also the roofing system, exterior doors and windows. There are currently 153 of your facilities that are in the fair category, meaning they have FCI scores ranging between 40% and 75%. Now, facilities in this category may have one or more of the large systems that have deficiencies, as I previously noted or mentioned. And in addition to that, they may have issues with interior finishes, their parking lot, institutional equipment. I'm not going to take the time to go through all of the schools individually. These next slides, and I know you have this presentation available to you. And finally, you have 30 facilities that are in good condition. This means their FCI scores are less than 40%. Now, buildings in this category typically have undergone major renovation or a culmination of renovations, or they've been built in the last 30 years. The deficiencies found with these buildings are typically associated with those building systems that have shorter life cycles. For example, interior finishes. So they may have issues with their ceiling tile, with their carpet, with VCT, with paint. All of these building systems have life cycles between typically five and 15 years. Now, I'd also like to point out that you have six facilities that have FCI scores less than 1%. Basically, these are five schools that have been replaced, as well as one school that is undergoing a major renovation. It's basically being gutted and rebuilt. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And the board is always looking at our, unfortunately, the $2.8 billion in need in comparison to what we get from the state. And I'm sure as you do this work, you know that, at least in the state of Maryland, all of our funds come from the state relative to that. There was a time when we could get funding at the county level when it seems that economic times were different, but we haven't gotten much in forward funding these days. That being the case, Ms. Higgins?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Could you turn to the slide where it had the graph that showed all the... I think that might be easier to kind of look from. It's clear that the ones who are in the three substandard facilities are 35 to 60 years old, right? And in regards to how your evaluation, your company's evaluation of these programs, how does this align with the state-approved criteria for funding? Do you know that, or is that a...
I'm not...
Let me ask my two questions, and then you can weave them together. Number one is, how does your assessment fit with the state-approved assessment? Because they're the ones that we're going to get the funding from in terms of prioritizing in the same way. And then secondly, how does your assessment fit with our own internal assessment in terms of priority?
I think that's probably, we've been brought in as basically, so you have a third party looking at this with a fresh set of eyes, of course. So then, how this information gets taken and intertwined with either state assessment criteria or with internal, then I think that might be more appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if I can address the first part of your question. For state funding, yes, they do have a certain criteria that addresses the life of a school, of a facility, the life of systems. And case in point, major renovations or systemic renovations. And so what this does, it does entwine, let's say, a school that is between 60 and 70 or in that condition. The state sees that as a project that when we submit the CIP and we say, hey, the roof project needs to be done, and you have a high FCI, to extend the life of the system, the state does support those projects wholeheartedly, 100%. They do. And then also with that, we do have in a capital budget Glen Arden Woods and Samuel Chase as major renovations. And the state also sees those projects as doing major renovations to extend the life of the facility, not necessarily a new school. And so it does align. The other part of your question, internally, we do also look at Mr. Boots on the ground, Mr. Belcher and his team, they look at all the schools also. And they may see things a little differently sometimes. Like I said, underground, they may see something that needs to be done. And when it comes, when that surfaces, let's say, there's a legal something, it does also just give us a measurement tool to say, you know what, in 2008 to 2012, it was assessed as you may have a potential problem. So we do see it both ways, and it does help us to align and make a decision.
Okay, let me ask a couple more questions then. For the 186 schools that have been ranked here, if I'm understanding you, sir, correctly, we as a school system take that information and incorporate it into our decision-making regarding what rank order we give those schools. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. And then, is the evaluation solely based on the facilities, or does it also include parking lots, tracks, any of that material?
In 2008, it was established that we did include the parking lots, and it was limited to basically 10 feet outside of the building perimeter. So you walk outside the building door, you go 10 feet, and that's where our assessment stops, with the exception of the parking lots.
So it doesn't include the fields, sport fields, track, any of that? It does include 10 feet outside the building and the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Actually, I think my question is just more to staff. I know it was just rolled out, but has anyone had the opportunity to read and review the Baltimore City's plan, 10-year aggressive? I call it aggressive because there's no way you can do anything other than $2.4 billion, not in 10 years, and it not be aggressive?
No, I have not.
Okay, so I will send it to everyone. I think it's worthy of at least just looking at, so that when we look at what other jurisdictions are doing, and Baltimore City obviously sometimes is very close to us, they have different needs in some respects, but I think their needs around buildings are very similar to ours. But I think even more important, knowing the limited resources that we have, I think it would be very interesting to see. My look at it, they've created a plan, and then they're sort of, their plan is, now let's take this plan to the road and hope we get the money. So I mean, I think that's great, but at the same time, I know we have to be realistic, but I do think that it's worthy of really looking at. Thank you. And then I have Ms. Fellows.
And thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Again, my comments are, and my comments are going to be extensive, because as a school board, new school board member, I just need to really have a greater understanding of our CIP plan, budget, and just the whole kit and caboodle. So I just, you know, have you bear with me with some of my comments, as well as some of my questions. Okay? And I had a team of mine kind of review this, so it just raised some questions with me. And I was looking at the document format that we have regarding our FY 2014, 2019 Capital Improvement Plan, the FY 2013 Educational Facilities Master Plan, and the capital budget. The document format. The Prince George's County School System should create a document that reflects the difference between a capital budget and a capital plan. The reason why this is necessary requirement is because a model laid out by International City County Managers Association, which is ICMA, which is the national leading authority on capital improvement programs in America. ICMA methodology suggests that capital improvement programs have three fundamental elements, which are as follows: the current existing list of capital projects, which is the IE capital budget, the five-year list of new capital projects, which is the five-year capital improvement plan, and the out-years, which lists the facilities needing capital improvements derived from the conditions assessment. So the out-years is the remainder of the facility's upgrades with the capital needs derived from the conditions assessment. So one of my questions is, why are you not using ICMA? And I'm just making that assumption that you are. Or why does Prince George's County not use ICMA model? And if you're not using ICMA model, what model are you using if you're not using the model, if you're not using ICMA? And then I will proceed after hearing your response.
Thank you very much for your question. Prince George's County, as well as other 23 school districts in the state of Maryland, we all follow the Public School Construction Program, PSCP.
PA?
PSCP, Public School Construction Program. Under that program, there are guidelines that we have to follow to submit a capital budget. And FY 14 CIP, which you have seen as a state submission, has followed all the rules and regulations based on submitting a project, so that the state can review that project and get approval. Nothing has, that whole process has followed state criteria, and there's no deviation from that. And so going through the whole process from, the whole 10, 11, 12-month process of a capital budget from inception to completion, where we are today, we are 50% in the whole process. The school district, meaning us, has completed that process in the first phase, 50%, in terms of what has to be submitted, in terms of project specs, project pages, enrollment data, any type of historical data, any type of, another miscellaneous information that the state requires. And so that answers...
What do you say the elements are of the...
It's several parts to it.
Several parts?
There's several parts to it. I think it would be better, I think if we can give you the guidelines from Public School Construction Program that outlines every aspect of a state submission that we have to oblige with and we have to submit. And if I had to go through them now, it would take a long time. And I can submit the guidelines if the board wants us to, that outline all these parts of the submission.
I would like to see them. I'm not sure about the other colleagues, but if I could see them now, it'd be great. I'm not asking you to give them to me now, but at a later date, I appreciate that.
We can certainly do so. But we all follow the same rules and regulations, whether it's us or Montgomery or Carroll County, we all follow the same rules.
Okay, thank you. The listing of facilities that need major and significant improvements totaled about 159 schools. The master plan recommends only 41 schools to be included in the capital improvement plan. Therefore, I must raise the question, what happens to the other 118 schools that need improvements? Since you have no out-year plan in the capital improvement program, should I make the assumption that these schools will not receive any improvements within the next 10 to 15 years?
You should receive, and again, I'm not sure what document, all the documents you review on. The CIP has two components of that. There's a state component, which is a very big book, and also, we did submit to the county council and the Office of Management Budget, a county section. In the county section, there's a master plan, a six-year plan, the budget year, and five years out. And it goes through comprehensively, from major renovations, systemic renovations, secondary school reforms, special ed. It outlined all those components of the CIP, which, you're right, is a master plan for six-year program.
Right.
It's not just a one-year snapshot. And that's in there. So again, if we need, again, guidance or submission, we will introduce so to say, here's what it is, to better explain it. We can certainly do so.
Okay. Who are the capital financing staff for the capital improvement program?
Myself, I'm the capital, I'm the CIP officer. I have a staff of three persons, budget analysts, budget technician, and also I have official analysts. And we work collaboratively with Mr. Belcher's team, building facilities, and we work also dynamically with everyone else in the district, whether instructions or field personnel. We work with, I mean, it's a dynamic approach to the CIP, not just in my office.
Who does a quarterly finance, financial projection for the capital budget? Who does a quarterly finance, financial projection for the capital budget? And who maintains a comprehensive analysis of general bond obligation borrowing for Prince George's County Public School System?
I may have to defer that question, Monica.
Actually, we'll take that question and then provide your response with the name of personnel.
Okay. Is it, well, maybe you may have to do this, is the personnel cost of these individuals charged against capital overhead, or do they come out of the school system operating budget?
Majority of the positions that are funded, actually all positions that are funded currently under CIP are funded under CIP, not school operating funds.
Okay, so capital overhead, okay. I must go back again to the ICMA model for capital finance, and what model do we use for fund and support capital overhead?
I would have to get more detail into what you're referencing as it relates to that item.
Okay. And what I mean by that, well, let me just say, using a prototype, just to give you an example, say for instance, we're replacing, replace, where the prototype is replacing and insulating a new gym at a high school. In that replacement of a new gym, you have to design a, you have a design cost. You cannot have this project unless you design it, okay? So once you design it and turn it into the school system, who reviews the design to make sure it's correct based upon the scope of work and what we want in this new gym?
So can I make the recommendation that we, we actually schedule a meeting so that we can go through the entire process that's stated by Mr. Rupert McCabe, because there's also a process that we follow that's not only school system process, but a Maryland State Department of Education process that we have to follow, and that's also part of that schematic scheme.
Okay, so you want to recommend that I staff questions and have an offline one with you?
Or if you provide me the questions, we can have staff who can respond to those questions and then set up that session not only for you, but as well as Ms. Epps if she would like, and additional board members if they need additional support in CIP as well.
Okay. Because I, again, as a school board member, new school board member, wanted to just look at, because we talk about, we only get state money for our schools, and, you know, I think that's, we're limiting ourselves, and we talked about being relentless of what we do when we are, you know, bringing out this plan and getting money for schools that are in dilapidated, deteriorating conditions, and we cannot continue to have that. So we need to be relentless in what dollars that we go, how we go about getting dollars for our school. So in FY twenty fourteen, twenty nineteen Capital Improvement Plan is projected, the cost is a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. The condition assessment study projects the facility's improvement needs are about two point eight-two billion dollars. The one hundred and fifty-eight million dollars reflects less than six percent of the total need. Therefore, a citizen or an elected official could easily interpret that the school board and the school system is not concerned about ninety percent of the infrastructure needs of the county. I would like to recommend three alternative supplemental solutions to this financial problem that we could explore. So again, we can go into it offline, but I would like to make some recommendations to your staff about that.
Definitely.
Thank you.
I'd just like to just interject a quick comment in terms of advocacy, and certainly any additional resources or supports that you would want staff to take a look at, we're certainly happy to do so. But I also want to assure you and the board that as we move forward, and the state does have a defined process related to CIP, and that we've done an initial presentation of our needs, and then most recently participated in a testimony before the panel, and we were very clear about the two point one billion dollars in terms of the actual needs related to capital improvement within Prince George's County Public Schools. And so I want you to know that that number was put out there as part of the testimony, and certainly we will continue to advocate and appreciate any additional guidance that would come from the board.
Thank you very much, thank you, Monica.
That concludes questions and comments relative to that section. Dr. Crowley, yield to you.
I think we have a number of consent items. Items four point oh one to four point oh seven are for approval of schematic designs for Bond Mill, Walden Woods, Catherine Reed, Deerfield Run, Kettering, Frank Dent, and Melwood Elementary Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley, these are scheduled for the January meeting.
I'm sorry.
If board members, that's, that's fine.
It's okay.
If board members had any questions relative to the, the updates and consent agenda items, obviously you can ask those now, we will vote on them at a later date. They're put here ahead of time so that we would know what the changes or recommendations are. That does not prohibit you from asking questions at the meeting either. Okay. Next, Dr. Crowley.
Next, we have an item before the board, approval of installation of Zonar's GPS technology on the remainder of the bus fleet to ensure that all school buses have the same high-quality technology in place. Am I in a different place? Five point eight. Okay.
Five point eight.
Five point eight.
Ms. Higgins.
Thank you very much. Could you say what the software and hardware will be? And this will be on all our buses then, is that what we're looking to do?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did you need additional comments?
Yeah, I'd like to know what it is.
Mr. Bishop could come forward, please, this is our Director of Transportation.
Mr. Bishop, the famous Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Bishop.
Wow, hello, Mr. Bishop.
This is Mr. Bishop.
You've been a busy man.
Driving a school bus, sometimes you don't need a microphone. It's an exciting time. The software is Edgelog. Edgelog is the world's largest producer of software for transportation, school bus transportation. And Zonar, which is the GPS technology, and they are also the largest producer of proven technology for school buses and on-the-road large vehicles for GPS tracking, they've merged together for this project to put together a system for Prince George's County. What this will do is, we do already have, in our acquisition of school buses, already come with Zonar, that part of the contract, and so what we're doing is going to move forward and install this in all of our school buses. What this gives us in the GPS technology is not only the GPS tracking, but also the ability for checking on pre-trip, post-trip, and maintenance capabilities. We're going to have enhanced capability at approximately seven dollars a month cheaper cost by going across the board. So we'll have a savings in the GPS and about a hundred thousand dollars a year for our fleet. So we're, that's exciting. The merging of this data will help us move forward on our PMAP techno, commitment for on-time delivery to the schools, because every day, using the technology merged with the routing system, we'll get reports of when buses arrive, and we'll get a report of any of the buses that are late, once they come into what's called the geozone around the school. Once they arrive, it'll tell us and we'll have those reports, so we can be proactive, we'll know, especially at the beginning of the school year when you typically have those problems, of moving forward and saying, what do we need to do to correct this so we can get the kids to school on time? And of course, our goal is to be a minimum of fifteen minutes before the start of school so that students all have a chance to have a breakfast before school. So we'll have that technology, and that's what the, one of the routing software capabilities will provide us, is that reporting capability. We will empower schools because this will be a web-based product, and so they'll be able to see where their buses are. And you actually will be able to see the little school bus moving along the route of where it's supposed to be. We get a new school bus driver, we'll get alarms that tell us the driver's lost, they need help, so we can reach out and try to get them back on track so we can keep on, keep them on schedule. So hopefully I've answered your questions, you have any further?
Yes, I have one. The, you're saying that this program was put together specifically for Prince George's County, not to be a naysayer, but does that mean that the kinks haven't been worked out of the system and it's a brand-new system?
All right, so let me, let me make that clear. What they've done is come together and they're offering us, I'd say frankly, because we are so large of a district, that the partnership, I've, I have experience with Edgelog and GPS technology, it's, I've already installed this at another district once before.
Okay, so this is-
But here, because we are so large, we are getting all the hardware for the GPS for free, because they want to demonstrate, obviously, if Prince George County is going ahead and we prove this out for the rest of the state of Maryland, I think they, I believe that, they believe that that's a good marketing technique for them to move out and build to-
But they're not, we're not a test pilot for their-
Not for this particular system, no.
Okay, all right. And then I'm assuming then that we are not talking at all, at least this year, about any cameras on our, our buses? Is that correct?
All right, so that's, that's an excellent question. We're, as we buy new buses, we're getting cameras on the buses.
Oh, okay.
But we would like to move forward to leverage that technology to make sure as soon as possible we can have that across the board. We, it would still take a number of years, so we may look at some way. We do have some vendors, as, as information comes out about crossing paddle violations, just like we have red light. We have one vendor that's interested in retrofitting all of our buses with cameras because if they're going to put the cameras on the outside of the bus to check for stop paddle violators, that, that technology is already there, they'll put it inside the bus. We use that technology every day, so we would look forward to having that capability in a hundred percent of our buses.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I didn't see a cost associated, I know you said the equipment will, the vendor is putting the equipment in our buses for free, so there is no cost to the system at all?
Yeah, there's, there's no cost for the hardware for Zonar.
Okay.
So, and actually, we're going to have upgraded capabilities at a lower per-month cost. So we'll see that as we phase out the prior vendor. We have one, we've, up until this point, had three vendors, and we had some buses that didn't have any GPS on them, and it's a very, quite a bit of a struggle for me this year coming into a district where I couldn't just say, let me check on where that bus was. So we're going to work on that, and this will help put that on all of our buses. We discontinued one of them because they were just so expensive and unreliable, and so right now we have two vendors that are supplying us. What we're going to do is end up with one so that we can have this generic report to help us with our PMAC strategies.
Are you, am I sure if I'm getting my question answered exactly?
All right, so software, that's different, and so we have annual costs for software. So the, the other part of this, of Edgelog, Edgelog who will be the master contract holder for this, they're, other than just a, a beginning cost for some training and initial installation, they're not charging Prince George County for the software. The flip side is, is they are going to use their technology and their safe software capability married with the Zonar GPS, and that was really important for that to be there, because they will then, in their, they will take their experts and help leverage that technology to help us streamline our routing, so that the, the hope is that we will have fewer buses on the road at the beginning of next school year. So they'll be working, as soon as we can get the GPS installed, they will take and mirror all of our existing routes right now, they are, they have an ability to copy them all into the other software, they'll start working on making sure that they're all showing up properly on the GPS, and they can use their technology to say, this school works better with this school, and get the timing down so that we can have fewer buses on the road next year. So where our cost could be is we will, based on our baseline, and we've just established a baseline, we've already, since the beginning of school year, worked really hard, Tammy Morris's team and our supervisors have worked really hard, we're, we're down twenty-one buses from the start of the school year. So we're pretty close to our target and my commitment to Dr. Crowley, that we'd be at about twenty-five, and I believe by, by the twenty-first of December, we'll be down twenty-five routes from the beginning of the school year. That'll be our baseline. Edgelog will then be compensated for any routes that they eliminate for next school year, as long as they've been eliminated for ninety days after the beginning of school, at the, at the cost of eleven thousand five hundred per route. Now, every bus right now, frankly, Prince George County is one of the most expensive transportation systems in the country. We, because we wouldn't have to buy the school bus, because we don't have to do the maintenance every year, the five-year savings is around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per route that we'll save. So a hundred and fifteen minus the eleven thousand five is what our savings will be over that five-year period.
Okay, it's sometime, would you give us that, we need a breakdown of that report and what that's going to look like? I know this year is not going to generate cost, but the upkeep and further down the line, we really need a breakdown when you get a chance, if that's possible, Dr. Crowley. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, thanks.
I would just note that it does say, see the attached for budget implications. So in order for the board to really be able to vote on this item, we, we do need to have more definitive costs associated with it. Okay, Ms. Epps?
Thank you so much for your, your presentation, and it sounds like it's pretty exciting stuff coming down the pike. One of the things that you said, just a point of clarification with regard to, you said that in response to Ms. Higgins' question, that it wouldn't be, we wouldn't, Prince George wouldn't be the test, you know, guinea pig for this particular company and the software, not the software, yeah, but that, but would it also be their first opportunity to take it to scale this large?
For the, for the scale of-
Of Prince George's.
Yeah, of the actual, all right. There are individuals in the country that are using Zonar. For instance, First Student, which is the world's largest contract producer for school buses transportation, uses Zonar technology for following their buses and for all their time and attendance. They have over a hundred thousand units right now of Zonar in use for all their time and attendance and tracking. Edgelog has been using their own GPS, but the fact is, is that Zonar is so much cheaper because of their technology, their patented technology for how they send out the data, that it made sense for them to use Zonar now. So about a year and a half ago, they announced this partnerships where Edgelog was going to stop using their GPS, which was like Sprint or something like that, and start using the Zonar, which doesn't rely on a phone company.
Right. But my question still is, given that the, okay, so this is a new partnership, right?
Partnership as far as-
Between Edgelog and Zonar.
The partnership is just the GPS that they're using?
Right.
Yeah.
But in terms of, who's, who's doing the administering or the monitoring or, of the GPS such that, because what's going to happen is, I mean, the county's huge, so inasmuch as they may be used to doing it, and you were just saying they're looking for an opportunity to go to a grander scale. So in, so as they do that, is it something that we need to take into consideration as they take it to a district this large?
Okay, excellent question. As far as the software and its capabilities, New York City is a little bit larger than us, and they're using Edgelog for their routing software. So for scale and being able to work in a large district, that does. The, the GPS is, will just be, because it's all web-based and low data usage because it's Zonar, the scale is not a factor. Using other older telephone technology for your GPS, that was a problem because you had to store so much data, so that would be a problem when you got to large scale. So that I would be afraid of that, but they're, the difference in the technology. Zonar, I've, I've worked with Zonar, I did have experiences really being Seattle, where I came from, Seattle Public Schools, was pretty much the guinea pig for Zonar as far as school districts, and approximately four hundred buses as in scale. We're about, Seattle is about a third of the size of Prince George's County. So it was proven there, and Zonar itself has made at least three iterations of learning what to do in school buses to make sure, well, frankly, to make sure school bus drivers can't alter the system. So they've made those moves so that now it really is foolproof, and the data transfer technology is there. So scale is not an issue. I'm, I'm trying to answer your question as far as, but we, we really will be the largest school district that's used- largest school district that's using the combined efforts of these two companies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Um, Dr. Crowley, I think, you know, transportation is such a huge issue for us, and so I would also ask that, um, in preparation for the board, to have the vote on something that's, I think it's massive, um, that we actually have real data about the cost, we got that, but also some comparisons. So it does sound like we're the largest school district, to Ms. Epps' point, for the combined effort. Is that what I heard you say?
For, for this combined effort, right.
Okay, so, I think it would be helpful to really be able to look at that and, um, and, and co- have a level of comfort that, you know, that, that moving forward, that we'll be able to make, that'll make sense for us in our district.
Okay, we'll pull some information together for the board.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Burrows, and then Ms. Higgins.
Actually, I'll wait until we receive, uh, uh, support documentation.
Thank you.
Mine is brief, and I, I think, I know I speak for myself and, and probably for my colleagues as well. Um, given the issues that, um, we've had and that you personally had, um, addressing, uh, with transportation, uh, some assurance that this is a solid, well-tested, that is, we're not going into an experiential stage that we would have to address with August, with this new system. Um, that, that's what I know I'm looking for. Are, do we have a, a, a well-founded, well-tested program that we're not going to go starting into, um, something new, uh, and have a, a difficult beginning next year?
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's, that's why, um, really, we should have, um, if we'd had the ability to bring this forward to you three months ago, um, as I requested, like in August, to have it brought forward, um, if we'd had that time, we would have that installed, but it's always been my desire to keep a dual system going, to keep the existing contract, uh, in, which would be ending in July, um, so that we have dual systems going to prove out and make sure that we have a system that runs regardless. So I, we would keep the other going, we've already paid the maintenance fee, so we'd keep that going, and that would allow us that flexibility, should for some reason it not work. I have never had that experience with Edgelog, so I wouldn't expect that.
Right.
Um, I've already used their GPS systems.
But you're saying you've got a fail-safe ba- basis so that we can provide services smoothly?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Uh, colleagues, in the interest of, um, what we have indicated to the public around getting information relative to the superintendent search, um, the next item on the agenda is actually the budget consent agenda, and I would ask that you submit any questions that you have in writing relative to that, prior to it returning to the budget, uh, to the, to the agenda, um, at the next meeting for a vote. Uh, Dr. Crowley, unless there was something specific you needed to point out to us relative to that, you and Mr. Shearing?
No.
Okay, thank you. With that, um, we will adjourn from this meeting, so, did you have something else, Dr. Crowley?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burrows, and thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Uh, we are adjourned, we're going to take about a five-minute break and come back so that we can go into the meeting relative to superintendent profile.